I'd like to call the meeting, the orders, the call for orders, meeting of our first official, dated Wednesday, October 16th, with the rise of our application, led by Mr. Pam Layle, on the second person material, true, qualified officially, led by our own Mayor Boam, Mr. Wade. Please rise.
Good evening, Commissioner Schneers, and good evening, Mayor. Let us guide ahead. I pray to you, God, for your Son of Jesus Christ, I stand before you, Lord, with a humble heart. Thank you, Father, for waking us all up this morning and leading us throughout the day. Father, continue to bless and guide our city officials as they need and protect and watch over our city. Thank you for the healing of the sick and the shuddering. Thank you for healing hearts that you transform. Thank you for those who need second chances, that you blessed with a new beginning. Father, as we continue to go through hurricane season, I ask you, Father, to continue to protect us from death, harm, and destruction. We pray that these families, that we stay faithful in your word and prepare them. Oh, thank you for listening to my prayer and for who you are in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I would leave a message to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you all for coming out. Hopefully y'all, if you walk in here or some of the little better sounds, room has been trying to upgrade a little bit, so everybody can hear. I realize I have a very good voice, but mostly some of our commissioners talk very softly. So can you hear? Who can't you hear?
Commissioner Casey.
Oh, I'm going to forget you have to speak up.
Look, bend it back for me a little bit.
Well, we're gonna, I'm gonna try to make it a little better. All right, moving right along with our meeting, there are a couple people who signed up for public comment.
Mr. Mayor, I might add an item to our agenda.
Okay, go ahead, add an item, sir.
Consider for, consider decision for the amendment of the appeal and replacement of the entire city Bronx Department ordinance as presented by our city attorney, on the city attorney.
Are you adding that item?
Yes.
I had that proposal, was that about the second?
That was second.
I think motion second, to add item for city, city for discussion amendment, repeal, replace the entire city Bronx Department ordinance. In further discussion on that, here in the hall of papers, please write it. I motion carries, we will add that item as item number five.
Mr. Mayor, can we get a judicial item for motion 2019-15, which is considered as a very important?
I'll make the motion that we add another agenda item to tonight's meeting, the resolution 2019-15, request that Lynn County Board of County Commissioners honor their verbal commitment to the City of Brunswick City Commission to amend the City County NIU on the Hall of Conference Center project to extend the date of substantial completion by three years.
Second, motion second for that addition to our, our agenda. In further discussion, from resolution 2019-15. Here in the hall of papers, please write it. I motion carries to add that item, item six on our agenda. Okay, now Madam Clerk, you just handed me on, for public comment here, here, first individual on public comment, Mr. Roy Lucas. Sir, please step forward, state your name, your address, and I'll give you, I'll mention you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, Commissioner Mayor, my name is Roy Lucas, at 147 Country Road Circle in Brunswick. I'm here just to add some information. Last work session I was here, I spoke to several commissioners and assistant city manager, and asked if I could be any assistance in providing some information that may help you make a decision regarding the conference center. So I'm going to give you the documents here. Thank you. So what we have here is just an overview of what the discussion has been, what I've done some research for myself, and hopefully it's helpful to you. As the second sentence at the top of the document says, primary goal is to identify tax-based revenue that can be applied to the debt service on a miserable voluntary disbursement issue. The top table that I have here is simply the same information that you got from that company. And I share your gap in what company, and we're in the same ballpark. Mine's on a monthly basis, that's because my borrower from the bank, they want it on a monthly basis back. So I figured I'd, I got used to monthly basis. So anyway, again, I think the numbers are what we discussed, and then I read in the newspaper, the funds need five million, or 2.6 for 14,000 square foot, and about 1.8 million for that. But again, the document here is not to supplement to good information that you got from that, but clearly their numbers are more accurate than mine. There's some things I added in there, but at 3.5%, we're in the ballpark. If you times it by 12, we're worth a couple thousand dollars if everything isn't in the document for that debt and more. But more important, more important, the, the document is showing that currently the city has a hotel and motel tax of 3%. And there are four hotels and motels in the city, and in 2018, the revenue was projected to $7,000 per hand, per year. And it was placed, that means $5.80 a month. It is expected that the city should, or would, or could raise their hotel and motel tax from current 3% to 5% in 2020, which would match Lynn County's hotel and motel tax. And most of the places that I research do have a 5% tax. So also, you discussed at length that you would have 125-room hotel to accompany your Congress Convention Center, and we use an occupancy rate of 60% and a nightly room rate of $80, then projected monthly room revenue is around $180,000 a month. So if you take 5% of 180,000, that's $9,000 a month that the city would receive in your hotel and motel rate. So the numbers that I got are just from historical documents. I would recommend, and I'm sure you will, talk to the hotel air who's going to build the hotel, and make sure those numbers are accurate. I think they're conservative. And on the average for the United States for the last time, the hotel and motel tax range around 70%. 60% is somewhat conservative, but I would, I know you will, but I suggest to check, check that. So if you add the hotel and motel new revenue of $9,000 a month, plus the 5% to the existing hotels, you come up to roughly $10,000 a month in revenue that you may use or could use to offset your debt service. That was my purpose, is to see if I could help you. Any questions?
Any questions? Well, sir, thank you for, for doing the research for us, and then the credibility to some of the things that we, we wanted as well. So we appreciate that very much. I appreciate you very much. Appreciate you a lot, Commissioner, too, because give us another set of data to extrapolate, although we were concerned, though, we never had the actual numbers. So thank you for doing the research for us. Any questions? All right. Thank you. All right. So next individual for public comment is Commissioner Allen Booker. Can we really allow him to speak?
Please, Commissioner, two for, I need two minutes to sit down. I am, I'm here to, to comment on the conference, Senator Terrell, and I thank Mr. Lucas, is it, for his, his efforts in providing additional information for financing of this, this project. First of all, I want to say that I am, I fully support keeping project at the size, at the larger size, because I think that it's, actually, we probably need to be larger if we're doing some other things, from my understanding. My research says that the size should be, if we're doing something there, it should be that size. My concern, as you all, all know, is how we, we finance this, how we pay for this. And I do not support debt servicing this project, because ever since I've been on the commission, and I remember when the mayor first got a letter, and seen him on the front page of the local news, with the original developer that we had working with this, and the plans that we had with this project. I, I really think that that's the thing, and my research shows, and talking with, I've spoken with many economic development folk, I don't have a background in that, so I have to talk to people who are experts in this. And I remember sitting in this very room, talking to a guy from the Small Business Administration, that you all were doing, had him here for a project. And I explained to him what the city had committed to there, and he just, he, he just couldn't believe that the city did not finalize that. And since then, I've talked to several people, just like you all, we go for trainings with ACCG, and I particularly trained for everybody about this, even at the state DCL. And they just cannot believe that we don't have a real development there. This is not a development there. We should be leveraging this property, just like our waterfront, to do something about our poverty, and that's what I'm looking at. And, and poverty is in the black community. If we're not going to do something that's targeting the black community and raise it up economically, then it's going to be all for naught. Just like I told the folk who are in the new city Brunswick, for Brunswick process, that they can develop at a time all they want to. But if we still have neighborhoods that are 80% impoverished, then it's, it's complete other failure. And so right now, we have an opportunity, avenue, to leverage this project, to do something great. We talked about the historic square, well, what about the Gucci heritage that we have here? Why don't we turn this project, and I know that Travis Speaker has suggested some time ago, to do it, make it a course. I've been before you all before, and I promise you, this is my last time praying, so. But the numbers are there. We brought, we brought the state in here, as you all know, it's been two and a half days, first time they've ever done that, around African-American history. And they, they were here, not because they just like us, and they do, but because of the money. The money behind tourism is there for this project, and we need to leverage it in such a way that African-American businesses are created, people are, are able to create wealth, and we are able to bridge the deal with poverty in our neighborhoods. Right now, the way this is structured, we just, and, and just like the county, we, we service that all the time. But we need to do this in a different way. The mayor was right when he talked about looking at area tough, and he came back all excited, telling me about, he got me excited. And so that's where I'm coming from, that this is what this project really should be used for. And we know that we've had a hotel franchise on the table, actually, we've had three that want to come in here, for over six years. Now, most communities would, I mean, they would, they would really hurt somebody to try to get in line for that. But we, we, we failed it up, for whatever reason, it is time now, because of our children that are impoverished, and the other families, that we do something about this. So I ask you all again, to really consider that, when you're delivering on this. Do not debt services. We, we need that money to put in recreation and other things. We can do all of this and more, if we put the right deal together. So please consider. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. I took MS, one sign up for public comment? Okay, we'll move right on with our agenda, our present agenda. Next item, recognition, presentation, awards, proclamation presentation to President and CEO of Goodwill South East Georgia, Michael Mookler, and Senior Director of City Service, Alex Vasquez, recognized on October 2019 at National Disability Employment Awareness Month. You can please go forward, please.
Eric, what, what did you hear with that?
Oh, that's fine. What, what, Mary?
Her driving force and everything.
What, what, Mary? Glad to hear you reading this proclamation. I want to tell you a quick story before I do that. I went to, to Goodwill at one particular time, and it gave me a overview of what's going on, operations. And I walked outside, I saw this hat that says, "Harvey for Mayor." I'm like, where did you get this from? Where did you get this from? I, I was just, just over, and he saved it, and he gave it to me. That was really good or something. So, they say, "I'm there." Anyhow, anyhow, we're so happy to present this proclamation to you, to you all. And it says, "From the Mayor and City Council of Brunswick, Georgia, we hereby introduce this proclamation, whereas workplaces governing, governing of the towns of all people, including people with disabilities, are a crucial part of our efforts to build an inclusive community and strong economy. And whereas, the U.S. Department of Labor, Office of Disability Employment Policy has designated October as a month to raise awareness and about disability employment issues, and to celebrate the many varied contributions of people with disabilities. And whereas, Goodwill Southeast Georgia is recognizing National Disability Employment Awareness Month this October, by celebrating, by celebrating more than 100 associates employed at its federal contact sites, including the federal law enforcement train center, Fleet Tech in Brunswick, Georgia. Now, therefore, I, what they are being, Mayor City of Long Whiteman, City Commissioner Johnny Gates, City Commissioner Richard Harris, City Commissioner Julie Martin, and Mayor Boam, Vincent Wade, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2019 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And in doing so, we call upon all employers, all schools, and all other community organizations, community orgs, and any county, to observe this month with the programs and activities, and to advance reporting messages that people with disabilities are equal to the task throughout the year, just like anybody else. And sign I made on their Harvey, the mayor, especially by them actors, our city. Sir, thank you.
Mayor Harvey, commissioners for the City of Brunswick, we are so pleased and so thankful to this body for recognizing the contributions that all people in the City of Brunswick are able to participate in the workforce. And this is one more small step towards creating equity and equality for all adults in our community. We still all know we have a long way to go, but this is one more step towards that commonwealth that we all share. And I thank you all so much for recognizing this very important topic for the month of October. If I may, Mayor, may I introduce the members of the team that are here. So we have our Chief Operating Officer, Jason Marshall, our Director of Area Operations, Parker Kitchens, and Emily Corner, which is one of our board members located here in Lynn County, and Veronica Hunter, who is our Director of Government Operations and in charge of the flood sea operation. In the back, the distinguished gentleman back there is one of our other board members, Mr. Bob Miller, retired from IAP. So, and Michelle, our Head of Marketing, seems to be likely to take a lot of pictures. Again, we thank you so much for this, and we appreciate the recognition of all individuals to participate in our workforce.
Thank you.
All right. It's an honor to do, to do that. And along with commissioners, we, we are very honored to have Goodwill Industries in our community. So, moving right along with our agenda, I didn't consider approval, I would have to consider approval, October 2nd, 2019, work session and regular scheduled meeting minutes. Take a minute to, second for rules, commissioners, and anything more, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer motion that we approve the October 2nd work session and regular scheduled meeting minutes.
I brought motion second to, for approval of the work session, regular scheduled meeting. There was a correction in that before we do that. So. And then further, further discussion?
Yes, I have one. Small, I, I, I would love to let out on the regular scheduled meeting, the, the, the sentence just above items to consider for approval, which may should we make a motion to.
Okay, well, add that item that I mentioned, the correction to the minutes from, from October 2nd. In further, I'm just, I think, all decisions to the meeting, and most of the reports. So that motion I have second, for further discussion. All of papers, please write it. I motion carries. Thanks. All right, item number three, consider approval of final report that's on August 31st, 2019, is Catherine Milt, our final representative, presenting.
I'm going to do the city hiring. You have recorded financial reports for August 31st, that's a very two nonsense for fiscal year. You can see the revenues and expenditures for the month of August, and obviously, we had expenditures, most of the revenue, 682,000, year-to-date, which is just two months of July holidays, and we're at 18767,000 dollars. As I remind you every time, July holidays and September are very slow months for revenue coming in. And actually, in September is when I paid the 990,000, something thousand dollars to the pension that we were starting to pick up, cash revenues coming in now. And we also just received the insurance premium tax that we get yearly, and that was 11 million dollars. So, just giving you a little bit of these, we did have months coming. Cash balance asset of August 31st was a little over 3 million dollars. Majority tax money, obviously, was that George 101, where it's starting to higher rate of interest. We've lost, year, for the month of August, we had an increase of 8.5% and year-to-date, which over just the two months, had an increase of 5% or 6%. Our other tax on the other hand, is showing a 67.5% decrease from the same period, so I guess year, month of August, 33% decrease for the year.
I mean, you have nine hours?
I, I know this thing is a little bit, and so watching it carefully. And I think that the GMA is watching to, to see how it's affecting the cities, but maybe we're slowing down our purposes, but I think it's more intentional what, I think, I feel they just like to say it was in front of us, so that money. On second page, we see these last six projects, we are at about, was it 70% through with the plus six? Their cash balance at August 31st at 5.6 million dollars, and the floor status is at George 101. And you can see collections, we are right about at 70% of collections, and it's right at 70, currently 70% of period for plus six. So hopefully, we will, we will match what we were anticipating, with a total of 13.8 million dollars for the entire project from April 17th to September 2020. I can see the, I'll remind you, the first column is the project budget for the entire period, the entire 13 million, 13,000. The second column shows what we have collected at the top, and what we have expended since the beginning of these last six projects. And the last three columns are just for the current fiscal year in September, June 30, 2020. For the month of August, we had 390,000 dollars, which went on streets, approximately 60,000 off sidewalks, and 101,000 indigenous and drones just for the month of August, so far, certainly money for these projects that are currently further, further along, so it's, it's, it's available now, I imagine. The next page, that's plus five, we have 1,439,000 dollars in this plus five in the bank. The floor conference center, we have about 1,340,000. That's a difference from what we have, we have 135,000 more in the bank, which, as I said, could be allocated to the floor conference center, or we could be put into one of those other plus five projects, which we, it's a, that's, that's up to you guys again. Commissioner Case, I did add, I'm up here to show you how much plus the balance at Lynn County that they still have, they have signed plus for, we have a conference center, so they have 1,366,742 dollars, that's August 31st there, and we have 1,304,000 dollars on our side. No straight comments. There's no expenditures.
We got very few qualified applicants out there actually in this job. We're pleased that we were able to dedicate Ms. Mack, or she's a Mack Collins. She's some of the many people that you may be aware of and know she worked for. She's a Georgia area action authority. And is the community services director at the present time. And so she has been a place forward nomination for consideration for confirmation by the city commission to fill that new department. She's a graduate of Florida State University. Which being a fortigator took a little time to get over, but I was happy to see that she has definitely a pretty qualified background from a very good school. And has worked in Hennepin Brunswick, she worked in Brunswick, I think recently after having talked to her. We saw a front page story, we saw it in Hennepin, it's just profiled. So it's a lot of people have an opportunity to go down there to know her. So we're pleased to bring her to you tonight for confirmation and any questions to answer.
Commissioner, questions on Ms. Mack Collins? I have served on the postal area act authority board and I've had many discussions with Ms. Collins. And five days of being very questionable and her performance and reasons. This is basically what I would say, I think she's been pretty efficient to our, to the staff of the city of Brussels. But any comments, guys, have you had any?
I know, I know. So I got that, and I was happy to see her, you know, we had had an opportunity to be able to have her here. So that everybody else can see her that may not know of her. But she is a community action person and that's what we need, a community action person. So I was very happy to see this being offered for us on tonight.
I've had an opportunity to interface with her as well. I think she's very capable, I started that she's coming on board and I think it would be great if she could be introduced at our community.
Excellent. I believe that maybe your first day.
I've seen her make some wonderful, wonderful things. And I think it's a real good show.
All right. Commissioner, we have heard the name presented by City Manager. For the formant of Dominique Mack Collins to position, for the position of neighborhood community service director. And hearing the comments from each of you all and also my comments, I will entertain a motion for consideration for confirmation.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to motion to confirm Ms. Dominique Mack Collins to the position of neighborhood community service director.
Second.
The motion second for, to consider the confirmation of Ms. Dominique Mack Collins to the position of neighborhood community service director. Are there any further discussion? Madam Clerk, call her over.
Commissioner Bates, I have any votes?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor, is that any votes?
Yes.
Commissioner Markham, have any votes?
Yes.
Mayor Brooks and Louie, have any votes?
Yes.
Mayor Harper, have any votes?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you, and Mr. City Manager, please make sure Ms. Mack to, for introduction to this board and also to our community next meeting. Later. All right. Without you, item number five, which is procurement ordinance. Which is discussing on amendment to review and replace this entirely city of government procurement ordinance. And our own city attorney.
Here, President. Could you, like, give me a question? This is essentially not necessarily a second meeting, but you saw this at the second meeting in September. This is a complete rewrite of the city's current procurement ordinance. During that meeting, there were some items that might have been revisions or described or discussed. If you wanted to look through the majority of the ordinance, it remains the same. If you return to page eight. At the top, number three is local, in preference, there was a discussion at the last meeting when we were looking at this ordinance. Of trying to just put in some language that would encourage local bidders to participate in the bidding process. All that I can really find is that we could, you know, promise to encourage and use all reasonable efforts at the very top of the end of paragraph three.
Is that two, that's two sections? Is that two, two pages eight that are exactly?
The section you should be looking at is the actual ordinance amendment with the heading at the top and the. And so the, do we look, are we all?
No, all of them.
Right, okay, sorry about that. Yeah, what we're looking at, the guidelines for the unsolicited proposal next, that's the other one. There are just some minor revision, one was encouraging more participation. We can, there's a discussion about whether we can go out after the bidding process was done and determine why they had not submitted, local bidders not submitted. I think that would be something that we just, we can't do since bidders, if there are any bidders that put forth an effort to submit. We can't get back out and start asking singular entities in the city, people or county, why didn't they come in? But we can try and encourage the best we can to have local bidders come in and submit it. I think we already sent them out to a list that we maintain to try to make sure that they know that the city is issuing a request for bid or a request for proposal. Do you mind typing on that page? Well, on page nine, there was a discussion, if you look at the bottom, section two, that's three fifty-eight contracts involving an expenditure below twenty-five thousand. The negotiation of those contracts had discretion faults within the city manager's office. But there was a discussion or request that be revised at the city manager if he's going to negotiate a contract and approve one for less than twenty-five thousand. Immediately or notify the city commission. And I just added a little reason, as soon as reasonable and practical. That could be an email, that could be the next city commission meeting. I think that most of the time, Joe's office probably don't know, it'd be an email, that would be appropriate.
As long as reasonable.
That's, that's easy. I mean, if you wanted to put something very specific in there at the next commission meeting, that, I mean, it'd be happy, it'd be happy to do that.
Because you always want to be practical.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, I would say, you know, at least two, three working days. Sure. That's good, the rest of the mission.
Or then a certain timeframe of having confirmed the purchase or something of that type. Reasonably practical, this sounds like a mental job.
So what do we agree on, then, today, the two, three businesses, and one very specific, and then three?
Yeah.
Let me say just a follow-up, I think reasonable is certainly has a different connotation. But you have to realize that he's got to be able to move and be flexible, do that hurricane, do that. Things that we're waiting for a while, so you need to be sure and think about that. I'm not sure reasonable is just a correct long phrase. But it needs to give him a little bit of attitude for, for that. We're gonna be in here one day. And I keep saying, I mean, I'm impressed on you going forward. And we, we think so. That's what this is all about, giving him a twenty-five thousand dollar limit that he can be reasonable with. But you really need to figure some time in there for him. I've been in this situation, I know what it is. I know that we need to know. We need to, we need to know as soon as we can, but.
You need to give him some time. If it's negotiated in the emergency procurement provision that's in the new ordinance, then if it's greater than twenty-five thousand. You're gonna have to place it on the minutes of the next regular scheduled city commission meeting. So you have to eventually bring it to, you have ratification for information purposes. So there is a, there is a provision that if it's an emergency situation greater than twenty-five thousand. He needs to bring it in and put it on the minutes of the regular schedule meeting. This is just for generally speaking, day-to-day operations and negotiation, the contract.
I think there were three.
Generally, generally, therefore, therefore, it's going to be practical, that's, that's too.
Yes, reasonable and practical is.
Business.
Business, it is important.
Because that's their business days, casual days, that makes a difference.
The next section, section two, that's three fifty-nine, sole source procurement, case of discussion and a request to add that the purchasing agent confirmed with either city manager or the appropriate department head when looking at sole source negotiations. So it's very simple, it just says, "Contract may be awarded without competition when after confirmed, the city manager or appropriate department. Purchasing agent determines in writing and have to conduct a good review." So if it is truly a source, sole source procurement and is confirmed with the city manager or the department head, for instance, it was a saltwater. Gero Alves said, "This is the only place that we can obtain this particular item that this ready to do, the purchasing agent can move forward and solicit directly with that company."
Yes.
You know, it could be a particular manufacturer also. You would have to consider. But then you would have to back up.
There are no more revisions. I was asked to check a conflict between two code sections, I didn't think that there'd be a conflict there in discussing the plan of work to be created. So the main items briefly discussed when I first presented to you. The ordinance C was the guidelines that would need to be adopted by the city commission. If you look on page twelve of the ordinance. There's a division two that is entitled unsolicited proposals. I went through a little bit of history this last time. We're reporting that they currently now allows local governments to adopt the ordinance and guidelines in which they can receive unsolicited proposals. So all that really is necessary in the ordinance is to say, "Yes, we will do it and we're going to adopt guidelines." And then the, the guidelines that we're looking at are, have already been sort of drafted in a model guideline by the public private partnership committee. So if you look at those, those are the other, that should be a second set of documents that can proceed. What that does is lay out the process in which the city can solicit and receive unsolicited proposals. The major issue that you'd be taking from this and the discussion that needs to be had, obviously the first two pages contain the definitions. But if you look at page two of that, down to the hundred guidelines, time period for receiving unsolicited proposal format for submissions. Because you don't want or use value or accounting to be inundated throughout the entire calendar year with unsolicited proposals. What the guideline suggests is creating a time period in which people can submit these proposals to the city. And they have set a period you have to meet. A best of, for example, if January one, March thirty-first. That is the timeline that they say you're willing to accept unsolicited proposals or review them and get back to you. So if you see there, there's highlighted and left available for discussion, the time period for each calendar year is determined by local government. Does it get staff member, I think it's name, phone number, email address. That would suggest, of course, it would be our purchasing agent or city manager, if that's what the commission sees for it. But really, the guidance I would need is what time period do you want any? It does seem to make sense to do January one to March thirty-first, I think that would be.
What, there is?
The ninety? That's correct.
Sort of a mid-year. I was curious around our reason as to.
I don't know if there is one, I mean, I think we are somewhat use of value, you can say January first to December thirty-first if you wanted to. Throw that out, I could open it up before the integrity. There are, to meet the guidelines that we're gonna go through tonight to get an unsolicited proposal approved and through the system, I mean, is a substantial task. It requires a upfront fee of a hundred dollars just to review. And then the city can set a fee schedule, we'll discuss the fee schedule, was developed by, if, how to sort of make sure that what you're obtaining, what you're receiving is not just sort of fly-by-night. Hey, we have a stay, we want you to take away. So it's, it's still gonna be a process to get through it. It's just whether anyone set an intermittent timeframe or open it up to, you know, anybody.
Yeah, I would think something like maybe the second quarter would be a good time to do that when you get into the first of the year. So you've got to, to get the city going into the new year.
I would say second quarter. Second quarter of this, it literally should be a budget process and anything about to get a decision here.
I was thinking.
The fourth quarter is more likely.
If the fourth quarter, the first year, if you're reading the, the first quarter of the year, let's say it's January to March. Then it's something that has to be budgeted or something, you know, then you got the opportunity for that part of the year. To, you know, that, that budget and see how it works. Something that they, you know. That's, that's my first.
I think my suggestion would be the first quarter, right? I would suggest.
Fourth? I mean, that calendar year, business.
Calendar.
Calendar, yeah. Okay, the calendar, and you guys.
January first, I would, I would suggest the policy, what I guess that, to January first, March third.
I would tell you, if you're not going to have the staff or people to be there, and it could give, with this policy, it could give those, it can, it's a, it's a person. It really can, you know, so that's it. First of the year is a burden of people that you put down. I hope that you're going to be using blank purpose holders, yearly purpose holders, and that's, you know, I really don't see this in this policy. I haven't really, haven't changed.
The purp, the purpose of the policy is so that you obtain a proposal that has all of the information already in. So that we're not having to submit and set aside a tremendous amount of manpower. We're giving, what I would say, the people that I asked to propose. The purpose would hopefully be that you receive all, you know, a put-together package that, I would hope that people are considering, wanting to submit something that is sort of, that has it together.
Because there will be a fee to, 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 and I'm quite sure if it, if they're not willing, they're gonna get the whole world. You know, the whole world.
It's gonna be the whole first of all?
That's correct.
I, I can try and see how it goes, I mean, I've been there, I know what it is when you start a new year. You can always.
I think first, for providing the calendar year, I think there's a reason, because we came to the budget year. Where we really go over our revenue, you know, we made projections, but by mid-year, it would be at where you would see that where we may have savings, where we could get unsolicited proposals. We could use some of those savings for, for, for.
So you're having January, March?
The top four, then are fiscal?
Yes. There's a three, 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 five.
What about if we ask for some, if we had a format such that there was a cover page?
There's also.
That had certain specific things, just as an overview of what's being proposed, so we could, we could glance at the.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, that the purpose really would be that you really want to have a fully, all the full.
Okay, yeah.
Value base. So if you look at, as a matter of fact, if you just glance down to format for submissions, just the next paragraph underneath. It states what must be a minimum submitted, and it goes through the other sections, we'll go through in detail during the remainder of the guideline. Project description, feasibility statement, proposed project schedule, project financing plan, it is a case statement. A description of the anticipated public support or opposition. Qualifications and experience, names and addresses of persons who may be contacted, and any additional information is welcome. Any reasonable requests applied to the partners, PPIA. One of the things that is beneficial, and I have sort of pulled a lot of this information, is a guest that does say, "Confering a subset of documents that they put together." I think also part of it is that the PPIA provides forms and templates of things that even, that are on the website, so this is kind of what we're looking for, so we'd like to see proposed.
Okay, so we need to decide about the time period of January to March, we had it now. Lady, um. Change to, uh?
No, essentially what this is, is that we will be adopting the guidelines that have been developed and submitted by the PPIA. And I haven't made any substantial changes to it. What it does is the several, the next several pages go through, and, you know, I just said A, B, C, and D would be expected in a format of submission. It goes through each, A being project description on page three, B feasibility statement. Move to the next page, project schedule, financing plan. Page six is a case statement, I mean, it does clearly tell every expectation, what must be contained in the items that should be included in the submission.
But this is not a, a free number one again?
This is, this is the guidelines that must be adopted.
Okay.
And really the order, sorry. I wouldn't suggest a straight, very far from what they put together, it seems to be inappropriate, so they've forgotten. I think the next section that I would draw the attention to is that, I think you go to page seven at the bottom, which is for the financial review and analysis of the municipal proposal. Has sets for the procedure that the city must go through if we want, of course, getting the notice that we've received it. Establishing a committee that would look through it to determine, it's an evaluation committee that would look through to determine whether or not she sort of moved to the next step. Maybe doing cost benefit analysis, this type of thing. Really, what you probably want to look at is page nine, determination, criteria for determining fees. The local government should charge to obtain an initial proposal processing fee equal to one hundred dollars. After that, that is just to sort of get the submission moving in place in the city. Afterwards, there's, what I've seen is essentially a big table that most of these other cities utilize. That is based on a, a financial understanding, the project needs less than a thousand dollars. If you make, if you go through the full detailed analysis process by the city, there would be a fee of approximately five thousand dollars. And then there's sort of a prorated scale as you go through, one to twenty million dollars, ten thousand dollar guideline fee. Excuse me, evaluation fee, twenty to fifty million dollars would be twenty thousand dollars. The, you know, goes to next overall scale. I can anticipate what type of proposals the student get, but the way that this law is written, it should be something that is put together right and go. And I hope people will not waste that much money to submit to this, if there's not, on the conversation containing all this information. But it's essentially a rolling RFP, if you look at that, a request for general proposals, that at any time, somebody can submit during this time period. A proposal that they see, that they think and see what they're interested in. So every time we sit in our meeting, you guys see the score sheets, the sheets that are already looked through, make sure each item has been checked, make sure that they've submitted the appropriate information. That is essentially what he's got on the paper. Next, on page nine, if you look in over F, request for proposals. So if the evaluation committee has taken a look at a proposal that's been submitted and suggested that it is a good proposal, sometimes the commission should look to potentially pursue. There is a requirement that the local government still submit, or excuse me, still approve and put out a, a request or repeating proposals. So even if they make it through that section, we still have to go out for competition. We still have to put it out, probably ninety day, essentially another ninety day RFP to see if there's going to be competition. And then the next several pages go through the process for which we could consider any conflict, competitive proposal, if there's one that is already being evaluated or modified. The, the city commission, or the, the evaluation committees.
So what would be the purpose in giving unsolicited proposals if they're still going to go through the same, through this process, tradition?
Part of it is, obviously, there may be something out there that the city is unaware of that could be a great opportunity. That we're not going to, and they can send out an RFP for. At the present, we can't really entertain those types of ideas, somebody just can't walk into Joe's office and say, "I want to follow it," and sell you on it. The other thing is that, I think the benefit of getting in first with the, with the unsolicited proposal is that you've already sort of jumped over the first hurdle, being pre-primarily approved. You've already been shown that reduction order, it's a ninety day RFP, but it did a tremendous amount of work that goes into responding to those. And I don't know if there would be that many bidders that can get their act together quick enough to go ahead and submit it, but it can be in quotes.
So did Avesta, just within this year, approve this, or?
They've had an election shop here or something.
Do you have any idea what they've had?
Now that I haven't had to reach out.
I'm just curious.
Sure.
Over that time period that they had this in place, what has occurred?
I don't know, we have a lot of more actual, like, one control.
Yeah.
Sounds good, anything else you're doing to the grant?
No, honestly.
Well, we appreciate it, I appreciate that the lessons this gave us too, but, um.
I don't know myself.
You were right. But this be there, we needed, so. Now, do we need to advertise in the paper, local?
I would ask if they consent to tonight, if they could go forward, that would be able to advertise and bring back for a paper on the paper.
I believe we have a consensus that we can go forward and, and put the paper in the great reference. More on adoption.
Sorry.
Thank you.
So, this is more to, for, for day-to-day operations. Is that what you need to do with spending the money? Do you need to limit the people that can spend the money? And you can't have it so everybody, every employee, city, local, and, and local, and. Pick up whatever it is, they, they want to be. And I don't know where we are with that, I know where we were in the past. We were very controlled, you can't afford. And I know that it raised a lot of liability with the type of care that they're given. Just want to see here, the exact way. Whereas we're not, as everybody, you know, we have the authority.
Yes.
To approve and vendor, we're working to, also know that we have certain employees with authority to go out and supply the hardware.
Correct, we have, we have a calendar, which employees have the ability to do it. Through the little. Correct, they have a, they have a calendar, which employees have an ability to do, and through the little project committee, hires, something they can run down there, so if you can have that ability, that would be better, Steve. And we had to adopt a purchase of our policy recently via GMA, correct, I believe that was correct. So we, I think we had to develop.
We have adopted a person, or not, and that, we might use our power, but we might not have, have a person.
We use a lot of those, like, the purchase for those locations, for those, that, that's part of, you know, the, 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 that's a free by, to, 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 to.
Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate that very much. All right, move right along with, um, with, uh, item number six, is resolution number twenty nineteen dash fifteen. Uh, this is a resolution to request plenty of time for permission on their overall commitment to the city project, permission to amend the city county, you know, you own the overall conference seminar project, for state of data, potential completion by three years, or alternatively, removal of that dollar requirement from the document. Um.
That is the resolution you have for.
Yes, that's what we have for, uh, we have discussed this, and, um, we should, uh, we have questions. All right. If not, uh, we already discussed whatever, if I entertain a motion.
Yeah, I thought motion, we, uh, got a resolution twenty nineteen dash fifteen, resolution requesting the county board permissions on the verbal commitment to the city government for the, uh, extension of the overall project.
Okay.
Second.
Probably motion second for, to force to adopt resolution number twenty nineteen dash fifteen, uh, submit to the county board commissioners, and then further discussion. Hearing that, all the families, wish your argument. And motion carriers and advocates, thank you so very much. All right, please give this to County Commissioner Cole Stakes. I need time. Um, Commissioner, we've come to the end of our regularly printed agenda, um, there is a need for a separate session, uh, with the attorney now. For personnel engagement and, you know, say, uh, real estate. All right, I entertain motion, but I don't have a motion to adjourn the separate session for real estate, personnel, and, and, and. All right, we, uh, if I go to second, I'll wait, wait, please quit right now. All right, motion carrier, okay, we can adjourn before, we go into a separate session, and we will come back later, if you're not ready to be.